Go ahead and call this regularly scheduled board meeting to order. Seven oh five, Clerks Slater, please call the rule.
Trustee Rizzi.
Here.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Supervisor Lasfrance.
Here.
Frederick Corstang.
Here.
Trustee Nordike.
Present.
Trustee Shipley.
Present.
Clerks Slater.
Present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic before the passage of one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Is there motion or discussion for approval of tonight's agenda?
I make the motion to approve this agenda as presented. Part.
To motion by trustee Rizzi, supported by trustee Nordike, to approve tonight's agenda as presented, all in favor?
Made by Shipley.
What did I say?
Me.
Oh, sorry.
Instead of Rizzi.
Trustee Shipley, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have two presentations this evening. First, we will hear from the fire department about their strategic plan. And then secondly, we will hear a presentation for the toughy tassel. I guess incorporating the toughy site into Tassel Park. An initial design concept for that. So first, first off, that chief majors and his crew.
She's good. We've got a new table.
That was a short turnaround with them. Whenever you're ready, chief.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate your patience as we get this set up. I know you guys have got a packed agenda tonight. I will try and cook through this pretty quick. I'll hit some highlights. Hopefully you've had a chance to review this this past weekend and open up for questions if you have any at the end. So I'll try and keep it brief. This, this is the 2025 to 2028 strategic plan for the fire department. This started in earnest, summer of 2024. Jade and I were discussing that it's important to get a strategic plan that aligns with the, with the board election cycle. So you have as a board, a background or a reference document when you make decisions in your, in your current board cycle regarding the fire department, give you a good idea of how, what our thoughts are and, and maybe give you some background. This was developed with, in conjunction with the public safety advisory committee. So three of the trustees weighed in on this. We, we had heavy citizen input. A lot of them are here today. We also had an internal strategic planning committee. And then Jade and I met every two weeks for the last year to make sure this stayed on track and kind of met all the objectives. Originally, this was going to be a higher out. Strategic plans are expensive, so we decided to do it in-house. I'm really proud of the results. So going forward. All right, what's in the plan? The plan consists of background, mission statement, vision, guiding principles, and internal SWAT analysis examining strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats to the department. A large citizen input component. That's developed into four lines of effort with about a dozen goals underneath those lines of effort. Start off with department background. Every community has got to take a look at what they need to protect, what assets need to be protect, be protected. What risks are to those assets? How do you mitigate those risks? And then basically, how much does it cost to provide that service? That drives what your police and fire services going forward. So Cascade is an example, thirty-five and a half square miles. Got two and a half billion dollars worth of value. You've got twenty thousand residents, five thousand households, close to a thousand businesses, couple of highways, et cetera. That's what drives basically how we set up our department to protect all of that. How are we doing? So the national standard for response and coverage is six minutes from the time you pick up a phone and call nine one one until the time you get firefighters at your door. If you look at the map on the screen right there in the blue, that is station one's response capabilities at six minutes. Pink is station two with the purple overlap. That is where we're at right now. We do meet standards on average. We average five minutes, thirty-three seconds by the time you pick up the phone and call nine one one until Cascade firefighters are at the scene, which is very good comparatively speaking. You will notice that there are quite a bit of white, unshaded areas. Those are areas that do not meet standards. Most of it is within a minute or two, which is not a big deal. If you notice southwest of the airport, that is about double. We'll talk about that in a little bit. I'll start off with our apparatus again. We run three engines. We run engine one, engine two, a paid-on-call engine. We have a reserve engine for when they break down. We run a medic, which is basically a pickup truck with medical equipment that our firefighters can cross staff. We run a rescue boat out of station two, a brush truck, a water tender, and four staff cars that we rotate amongst our admin personnel. Staffing. Our staffing right now is at six firefighters assigned per twenty-four hour day. We have one command officer, which is typically me, twenty-four hours a day. My deputy chief can handle that when I am out of town. Six firefighters for the amount of emergencies we have right now is, is what we consider like a sweet spot. That is exactly what this township needs right now. When we're at six firefighters or maximum staffing, we will put two firefighters on a medic truck, two firefighters on engine one, and then two firefighters on engine two. So then the two firefighters on the medic can handle a lot of those medical calls. And that still leaves engine one and engine two available to handle, excuse me, I get a little dry mouth. Able to handle those fires and car accidents and those types of things. When a firefighter is off on PTO or sick leave, you can drop down to five minimum, which basically eliminates our medic in service at the time. We run an engine with three at station one and then an engine with two at station two. These are our capabilities. Right now, we have an ISO rating of three. One is perfect. Ten is terrible. Having a three for a township our size is fantastic. Typical, typical ISO ratings for townships our size are in the five or six range. All hazards fire department. We run fires, auto extrication, TRICOM hazmat team members. We run at the EMT basic level with our firefighters for EMS calls. We are water, ice, and tech rescue qualified, and we have a substantial prevention inspection and investigation team and also a robust community risk reduction program. People, people often ask me, what is, what do your firefighters do for twenty-four hours? So we, two years ago in 2023, we did a study, a time study. And the way that shook out is you see the big orange slice of pie there. That is representative of how many calls we run. So we're at about twenty-six hundred and fifty calls. You divide that by three sixty-five, it's about seven and a half per day. To respond, remediate, reset, and report a call takes about an hour. So about seven point three hours a day, our crews are busy responding to calls. All the little slices of pie are your other tasks like rig checks, station cleaning, training, just all of the things that keep you busy throughout the day. So basically, a twenty-four hour shift. Our firefighters are busy sixteen out of the twenty-four. And then there's eight hours that are built in for rest. Hopefully that rest is in the middle of the night. It's not always possible, but it is a balanced shift. So for a twenty-four hour shift, that's what good looks like. And so right now, that's where we're at with Cascade. This next slide is what generated the most conversation at the public safety advisory committee level and the citizen input level. This is the forecasting or what's coming long-term. So this is beyond, I guess, those three years that we're focusing on, but it's important to kind of know what's coming in the next five to ten years. First, we'll start off with call volume. We average five percent increase in call volume every year after year since we've been tracking this for the last thirty years. And so if we're at twenty-six hundred and fifty calls this year and ten years at five percent average, you're looking at well over four thousand calls. So that seven point three calls a day becomes closer to eleven and a half calls a day. Your sixteen-hour busy time out of a twenty-four hour shift becomes a twenty-hour busy time, which is unsustainable. So in the next seven to ten years, that would be a, I guess, a touch point there. Where a staff increase would probably be appropriate or recommended. So something to look at in that seven to ten year range. Our firefighters are going to be very busy. Next, you have apparatus cost. Five years ago, an apparatus cost six hundred thousand dollars. Cascade Township's paid a million dollars this year. In five years, it's anticipated to go up to one point five million. It's unsustainable. It's at the congressional level. Not sure what they can do to affect that, but these are things that are going to be difficult to fund in the next ten years. Retirement, excuse me, hotels. Right now, our hotels, I mean, the township's doing a very good job implementing their hotel ordinance. The licensure program is, is really seeing, we're seeing dividends on the inspection trail. It's, it's working. We encourage you guys to, to keep up all the efforts. But as these hotels, we have sixteen hotels and it's about ten percent of our call volume. In ten years, they're just going to be ten years older. And typically, a Holiday Inn, and when it gets old, becomes a Candlewood. And then a Best Western becomes an American and so on and so.
We know.
And so as, as that happens, you see more issues. And so that is something that we are keeping an eye on. Next, we have our retirement facilities. We've got four, I guess, what we call retirement facilities in the area. It's twenty percent of our call volume to those four facilities. We don't anticipate that getting any less busy. That is something that we are keeping an eye on as well. Succession planning. Most of my senior fire officers will be able to retire in the next five to seven years. That's a lot of talent that's leaving out the door. And so we are keeping an eye, what do we need to do to make sure our young firefighters in ten years are ready to be senior firefighters or senior officers, excuse me. Paid-on-call, cost of living, it's a dying profession. It's difficult. Volunteerism is down. Our demographics in Cascade don't necessarily support that twenty-five to thirty-five-year-old to come in and want to do this job and spend two years getting up and training and getting up at two in the morning to respond to these calls. It's not unique to Cascade, but Cascade, it is something that is difficult to recruit and retain paid-on-call members. Next is the southwest corner of the township. Again, our response times are pretty poor down there. If you notice in the picture, that is the Meadowbrook Apartments. Those are the apartments that are going in in that area. So it's like five hundred units. There's a lot of families moving into that area. So we are seeing an uptick in calls. Our, our analysis in about ten years is going to surpass station two's call volume. And that would be something that the board is probably going to have to take a hard look at as far as like another station potentially, just on the horizon. Next is med three response. So about seventy percent of our calls are medicals. Out of those medicals, not all of them are CPR and, and lights and sirens emergencies. A lot of those are what we call med threes. Med threes are your lift assist, they're slip and falls, general illness, that low acuity, still need to go get checked out, but not lights and sirens to the hospital. Right now, we run about seven hundred to a thousand of those. Typically, what that looks like is our firefighters, if we're full staff, they jump from the pickup truck, they'll get there in a couple of minutes, and then they'll treat and triage these patients, and then they'll wait for a half hour to an hour until other EMTs get there and they take them to the hospital. It's, it's becoming an issue because it is, as we get that five percent growth, we are unable to respond to a lot of those other calls if we're tied up on these calls. Basically, you have three options. Option one is to just keep doing what we're doing. And as we get busier in the next seven to ten years, you would cry uncle and say, hey, we're too busy. That would be about the time the next millage comes up. And then an appropriate small staff increase of maybe an additional firefighter per shift would be appropriate, something to look at in the future. Option two, most fire departments in Kent County don't run med threes. We could certainly just cut the program. It would reduce our calls by seven hundred to a thousand. It would free up our firefighters to do a lot of other things. It would put us in line with, I guess, what would be the standard in Kent County. That is an option. It's not, it wasn't a popular option with the fire department. It was not a popular option with the citizen input committee either. Our citizens are paying that tax right now. They expect that service. So if, if a citizen is shoveling their snow and, or shoveling their driveway and they slip and fall and have to lay there for a half hour to an hour without anybody coming, it would be, I'm sure we would hear about it. Option three is instead of our EMTs driving a pickup truck and responding and then waiting for other EMTs to take them to the hospital, Cascade could put a fire-based EMS ambulance in service. That is something we talked about. That is, that is one of our goals we'll talk about later. That, what that would look like is our firefighters, instead of being a pickup truck, they'd be in an ambulance, they'd get there in a few minutes, and then they'd take them to the hospital and get back in service. It would increase. It would be, it would be a better service to the community. And then instead of the patient's insurance going to a private ambulance firm, it would go to the fire department. And then a lot of those little staff increases that we're anticipating in the seven to ten year range. My prediction is it would cover most, if not all, of that burden without having to go to the taxpayers. So that is something that we're looking at. So those are some forecasting long terms beyond the three years of this. Next, citizen input committee. Big thanks to our citizens that sat in on this. A lot of those names are very familiar to this board, longtime residents, business owners, subject matter experts in the field. A lot of them are here today. We really appreciate their help. They spent numerous meetings and hours and if, actually did some homework for me too to, to kind of submit their recommendations. So we do appreciate them. Some of the concerns, we won't go through all of them, but they're, they're what you would expect. Senior facilities and hotel emergency service demands, coverage gaps on the outskirts of the town, diversity, succession planning for leadership, cost of paid-on-call staff and retention issues, station two maintenance, apparatus being hit on the highways. That's a trend that's, that's increasing. Minimum staffing issues, are we too comprehensive? Mass notifications for storms, non-emergency medical response to those med threes, and then township growth. Positive citizen feedback. They think we have excellent apparatus in station one. Budget management, good overall coverage, community involvement, leadership, well organized, forward-thinking, small-town feel but highly capable, trained and prepared, good relationship with the board and the community, equipment replacement plan is well thought out, and then the prevention team is well-staffed and trained. Then it goes to advice and input. So this is all the homework they turned in and the recommendations from them. It was unanimous to explore the BLS non-emergency transport idea, more community involvement, mass notification improvements, explore a third station south of the airport, utilize new technology like drones and AI. Continue working with the township on hotels, maintain and update station two, develop succession plan for aging leadership, explore possible blocker vehicle attenuator for highway calls, expand community risk reduction programs, and explore solutions for the four senior facilities response demands. So all of that, so our SWAT analysis, the public safety advisory committee are, are all of our internal discussions, and then the citizen input kind of led to us focusing on four lines of effort and under their goals to kind of mitigate some of those issues we see coming. So going forward, line of effort one, roster development. Goal one, streamline black helmet process for paid-on-call. So it takes two years and about thirty thousand dollars to get a paid-on-call member fully trained. We think we can do that a little bit more efficient and a little better. We've got some, we got some initiatives in place and some procedural changes that we think we can, we can accomplish that in the next year or so. Goal number two, officer development program. To get those young firefighters to be senior fire officers, we need to start preparing now to get them certified and trained and professionally developed and educated so that they're ready to take over for all of us old timers. Goal number three, training improvements. We've actually already started on a lot of this. We're focusing on block training and, and scheduling to maximize the amount of hands-on training we can do. We've got additional fire instructors coming in, so it's not our same fire officers teaching the same classes over and over again. So some of that is already underway. Goal number four, paid-on-call recruiting and retention. That's a difficult one, but we are, we have some initiatives to increase that we're back into the high schools and maybe trying to attract some of those teenagers that are looking to graduate and maybe aren't on the college path. Firefighting might be an option for them. So we're seeing a little bit more of these kids get into the trades. We're trying to jump on some of that. Line of effort two, community involvement. We have a lot of our success and popularity because we do go to the heritage days and the, and the Fourth of Julys and the ranger rallies and all those fun things and hand out stickers for the kids. So we're going to make that a goal to continue to do that and then some. It was important to the citizens, it's important to our roster as well. Goal number one, hotel safety and compliance. These aren't going away. You guys are well aware of some of the issues we're facing with that. We're committed to working with you to, to make sure that they're safe and compliant. Goal number two, community visibility, again, getting out there and continuing to participate into all those things we normally do and then some. Line of effort number three, infrastructure. Goal number one, fire station two maintenance. Fire station two is built in nineteen ninety-six. Almost all of its components are at the end of their useful life. Couple of years ago, we replaced the entire HVAC system. This past year, we repaired the roof. You guys are going to hear us ask for a generator tonight. There's just a lot of heavy lift with station two to keep that going for another thirty years. And so for the next three years, you'll probably hear a few more things to keep that, to keep that as a focus. It is in the CIP and, and so for future, future years, you'll see some of that. Goal number two, emergency weather siren coverage. You'll notice in the, the red symbols there, those are our current weather sirens. As much as we like to use our phones for all of our communication, our residents were crystal clear that they still like to have that emergency weather siren backup. And so having said that, you'll see the yellow stars, those are gaps. Those are, there's neighborhoods and businesses sprouting up that they don't have, you can't hear the sirens. And so it's in the CIP, it's in the budget. We've got a very good plan with the city of Grand Rapids as well as Kent County to work in conjunction and make sure that if you guys move forward with the, the funding on that, that we'll have that taken care of here in twenty twenty-six. Goal number three, modernize and replace select gas equipment with battery power. This is a, a fairly easy lift where it normally wouldn't be a goal on a strategic plan, but because it's going to, it's about sixty thousand dollars to replace a set of jaws on a rig. And because they're going to battery power, there's some infrastructure on all these rigs that tie into multiple strategic plans. And so it's important to memorialize that. So then in five years, when we go to the next strategic plan, we bring that up, they're going, oh yeah, that's right, this is part of a broader plan. Goal number four, conduct station location analysis. As confident as I am in our analysis of what's coming, Jade and I have discussed this, we think it's important that a third-party analysis is probably appropriate so the board can, can make decisions for yourselves on, on maybe when some of those things are coming, you'll have a third-party unbiased expert to weigh in on it as well. That is also, I believe, in the CIP and budget for next year. And then line of effort four, growth opportunities. It's the big one that probably generates the most discussion is to pay to test fire department ambulance service in Cascade Township. We're not asking for an ambulance tomorrow. We're asking for permission to use this as a goal. And then so a year from now, my EMS team can come up with a proposal and show you exactly what we think is, is best. We're hoping for a twenty twenty-seven implementation. So then in twenty-seven and twenty-eight, the, the board will have two years of analysis to see if this is working or if it's not working, and then what those next steps are. I do believe this is good for the community, but that would be a, a discussion for the board at a later date in later this next year. And then last goal, maximize efficiency and explore opportunities with our Cascade Township departments. We have what I think is the best prevention team in the state of Michigan, especially for a township our size. One of the reasons why we have good numbers and a lot of capabilities with our prevention team is that we work with our building department and we got all of our certifications at the state level. So then we can provide fire suppression inspections on new builds in our community as well as other communities, in large part supports that. So it's not just coming out of the fire millage, really generate some revenues to, to, to pay for our prevention team. So we are open to other opportunities, whether it's with hotels or whatever you, you as a board can come up with that we can help with and utilize our talents we're up for. So that is the end of the presentation. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, we would hope that you would accept and file and use this as a document for the remainder of your term.
Thanks, Keith.
Can you tell us how many other fire departments in Kent County provide the med three level response?
I think last we checked, I believe there's three or four.
Three or four.
Yeah, so there's about twenty departments in Kent County. I think three or four, including us, provide that med three response.
So very few.
Very few.
Thank you.
I have a question. So if you were to entertain the idea of a third station down by the airport, south of the airport where that new development is, is, is that going to be able to touch the southeast corner? And then what's going to happen in the northwest corner? Is that you just need more staff to cover those white areas?
Okay, I'll, I'll address the southwest first. Our first option would be to work with the airport. I think that there's a lot of efficiency that we could overlap. It would cost the township half as much as if we would do that lifting ourself. If that's not possible and we had to provide all of the, the fire station, the engine and the firefighters to staff that area, the township does own property at Fifty Second and Craft that would get basically to like the new Goldenview neighborhood and then up towards, I believe, like Ken Robb, up into the Forty-Eighth Street region. So it would have to stay on the west side of the river. It wouldn't get into the east side of the river at all. And then as far as the northwest, from station one, especially with like a cross-staffed pickup truck, we can get to those areas pretty quick. So you can get to like your Manchester and your Watermark, really in that, in that range. The one that is difficult to get to is Cascade Trails Assisted Living. That is in the very corner border and we go there a ton.
We, with the new zoning, that came, that was an issue that we made sure that assisted living centers, higher density would, would only be allowed in what, within a, was it four-minute or what of the response?
A six-minute response, four-minute travel time, but then a six-minute total response.
That one didn't, that one slipped in beforehand.
Yeah, it's tough. Hopefully our neighbors that are planning these big developments are, are prepared for, there's a ripple effect for sure.
Well, and those areas are still well-serviced. It's just that it's an extra minute.
Correct. And that, and that would be acceptable risk in the northwest. The six-minute response that turns into a six and a half or a seven is acceptable risk based on what we, what we have. In the southeast of the township, that's a lot of farmland. There's not a ton of growth east of the river. We average about a one percent growth east of the river in call volume. It's pretty stagnant. The houses are there, are there. There's not a ton of new developments, so we know kind of what we've got out there. We're seeing fifteen percent growth southwest of the airport, especially with the Meadowbrook Apartments and some of the new additions on craft. It's becoming really, really busy down there.
Thank you. Just to piggyback on Scott's question about the med three calls, we provide the med three service currently.
We do.
And we do have times when a med three call turns into a med one or a med two, correct?
Correct, yes.
Feel well, you show up with a med three, I really have chest pain and I'm having a heart attack, and then you upgrade because you can come and assess our residents at that point. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. A lot of times people are sheepish to call nine-one-one, and so they downplay their symptoms, and then we'll upgrade and triage and patients say, hey, you're having a heart attack, you need to go. And so that happens quite a bit.
Because a lot of neighboring communities don't provide that service. I do think it's important that we do provide that service for our residents, and I think we talked about that at the last millage conversation as well, that there are times when you show up for a med three, but it's really something higher and more severe.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Our next presentation will be, we've got Mike Reese from the Troyer Group, Wes Landon from Native Ed, and then John Moxie from Fleas and Vanderbrink, the engineering firm. And these three professionals partnered together to come up with a, a concept for integrating toughy into the Tassel Park. As everyone probably knows, we had a design and earlier concept. But after feedback.
But after feedback about that concept, I think the general consensus was there's a lot of good stuff in toughy park already. We don't need to start from scratch. Let's keep what we have. And then also. Kind of make sure the focus stays on enhancing the riverfront. And not overbuilding. So with that, we, we were scheduled to have, this is a DDA project. The DDA meeting scheduled for yesterday was unable to happen. So unfortunately the DDA didn't get to hear yet. This is the first time in front of the board, but we thank members of the DDA for coming tonight. And it'll be up for presentation at the next DDA meeting in more detail. But in the meantime, we're happy that you guys are willing to come tonight and. Show off your sign.
Mike, this has been the best submission.
Thanks a lot for the introduction. I think Mike's getting the presentation up. So you guys can all see what we're. We're planning. You guys all have copies of the presentation for reference later. So what you have is exactly what we'll be flipping through.
You're good.
Thank you. We're excited to share our progress so far on the Castle Park project. We have been working. Our team about the last six weeks or so on inventory analysis, doing some survey work. And working with the township staff to review the site, some preliminary draft concepts. And then we have a draft concept to share with you tonight. So. You're probably familiar with the park, but just kind of a overall existing conditions. We have the Tassel Park. Course that's the main part of this project. The township also has some adjacent spaces with the acquisition of the former toughy property. And then below that, the former doctor's office cabin and also integrated in the Verberg property across Cascade Road. So, and also a little frontage along Thornapple River Drive. So this project is kind of looking at all of these spaces and how they interact. Some of the kind of main analysis or some critical points of the site. Of course, the former toughy property is really the gateway entrance to the park. From very heavily traveled intersection in Cascade Road. So very visible, we want to create a very welcoming and a gateway point. But it's also a very busy intersection that doesn't make it the most appealing place for gatherings. So trying to figure out a way to make that parcel work the best. As a gateway entrance, but also work as a park space to create an area that people want to come use the park. There's a pretty significant slope from Thornapple River Drive down to the river, which can create some challenges for accessibility. So figuring out ways to make that work. Also, you know, most of the park is in great shape. There's a lot of history. The donors that. Put money to create the park twenty five years ago and the structure is there. So we really want to make sure those are honored and. Some need some, you know, repairs and improvements, but that the restroom building and the Wisner Pavilion. And a lot of those features of the site, we just kind of want to enhance to improve that central area. And then along the riverfront, there is access. We see a lot of people fishing down there. But it, again, it's not very accessible for everyone. And it just has a lot of areas that are overgrown. If you get kind of towards the south end, it's pretty dense with the wooded area and some safety concerns. So trying to clean that up and provide more access down to the riverfront is another focus area. Splash pads currently decommissioned. And we have the opportunity with the toughy property and the former doctor's office there to really create an impact in that part of the park with more of a clean slate in that area. One of the great opportunities with the Verberg property on the other side of Cascade Road is the ability to have a trail going underneath the bridge. There is an area under the bridge that we can get a trail through there. Based on the current ground and that will provide an accessible route and a kind of a trail extension from the village, or if you're coming across Cascade Road Bridge. To be able to get into Tassel Park without having to walk across Cascade Road. I know that from living on the north side, trying to cross that with family, going to get ice cream or whatever it may be, can be a challenge. So having that opportunity to safely go under. Without the traffic impact is a great opportunity that we've explored. So just a couple of photos to show some of the existing park character. Again, just, you know, some parking in the, down by the doctor's office and some area of the park that would, could be improved into some great public spaces. You know, the dock down by the river and some of those areas just aren't accessible. The former doctor's office cabin there, very cool building that would like to be repurposed, but just. Structurally and the amount of work that would have to go into that, it's not very feasible, but the opportunity to create something similar in that area that could be used as a. Public space for events, gatherings, rentals, things like that. Moving towards the south end, again, you can kind of see just how thick some of the vegetation is. Looking the photo in the upper right, you can just barely see the dam through there. So, you know, opening that up, it's a very unique thing that we have here to have. The dam and that view from the park. And then just that kind of perception and reality of safety in that area. So. You're familiar with the, the previously proposed plan. This was from the village plan earlier this year. So this, we've kind of picked up after this, there's a lot of, you know, good elements to this plan. But looking into this and, and our team's analysis and some feedback from the township. There's a desire to kind of scale this back, especially in the main area of the park. There was a lot of areas that were. Proposed to be kind of redone and some of the existing structures and natural features in the park, we feel that should remain and just be enhanced. So we kind of built from this with that site analysis to kind of get where we are now. So kind of overall vision, creating a signature community destination for Cascade Residence that honors the park's history, restores its natural beauty and provides vibrant. New spaces for gathering, recreation and connection for people of all ages. So we kind of had a statement that just kind of captures the overall goal with that, really trying to enhance the quality of life for residents. While still, you know, honoring the river's ecology, financially sustainable design, trying to focus the improvements towards the. Toughy property and the riverfront to get the most impact there and also looking at. Long-term sustainability with the designs we have. Being important to reflect the character of Cascade Township. And as I mentioned, the honoring the past donors' natural features. We really want this to be a place that is used. By everyone at all times of the day, whether it's passive recreation, events and gatherings. Creating a space that works for all of that well. Some of the design principles to kind of help achieve that vision seamlessly connecting to the village and riverfront. This. Location is very important and as is kind of shown in that village plan, kind of an anchor spot that can help. Kind of facilitate the development of that village area and be an incredible place for residents. We want to have a variety of experiences, both for play, quiet reflection, interaction with nature. The ecological value of the river, very important to protect that, but create that connection to the shoreline. So if that's overlooks, shoreline enhancements, ways to get people down to the river and really be able to interact and enjoy that space in a safe and functional way. And also easy to maintain long-term. Just in creating, I was going to mention the maintenance strategies, any design, it has, it can look great at the start, but we need to consider long-term. The, what is needed to maintain this, that the township staff, staff understands what's needed to make this a successful long-term project. Right. I will let Wes kind of go over some of the draft plan.
Great. Thanks, Mike. Yeah. So everything that Mike just talked about, looking at the different aspects of the park, where we've. Come from with the previous design and where we want to go from, from here with all the feedback that we've gathered has led us to the plan, the concept plan that you see before you right now. We've got some zoom ins of this plan. So I'll go over a couple of the key characteristics that we, we want to focus on for the beginning. So. In a nutshell, you know, we didn't want to throw the, the baby out with the bathwater. So everything on the eastern and, you know, kind of more southern eastern part of the site is really maintained. We're just creating better connections, better ways to get through the park. Better accessibility. Some of the images that, you know, Mike went through showed down by the river, we've got little footpaths that that's not accessible, only, you know, and it's hidden, not well seen. So. Opening up safety lines of sight to the dam, improving connectivity, reinforcing the good ecological features that we have. While, you know, getting rid of maybe invasive species or things like that, cleaning up the park and really celebrating the, the setting that it has right along the river. Then on the, the northern. Sorry, I got that wrong. Yeah. More the northern side of the park by the Cascade Road and, and Thornapple River Drive intersection where the former toughy site was. That's where there's a lot of opportunity to do something bold, new, create really a generational project, you know, today with the opportunities that we have. So on the main, on the corner of Cascade Road and Thornapple River Drive, really having a nice showpiece, really celebrating and showing people that wow, what is that at that corner? That's Tassel Park and how cool. We've got to go check that out, really making that a symbol as you go through that intersection to really anchor for the space and a draw for the community. Looking at across the street at the newly acquired Verberg site, exploring opportunities for using that to connect down underneath the bridge and connect to Tassel Park. So having an opportunity to really safely get across. Cascade Road. That's something that we've heard a lot is how people are worried about crossing that street, even at the crosswalks. It's just, you know, a lot of traffic. So. That's a great opportunity to extend the feeling of Tassel Park across Cascade Road and really connect the two sides. The two sides of the street there and having that be accessible is really important. So making sure that you have an accessible means to get down. So people with mobility issues and things like that, you know, people on bikes or, you know, any sort of wheels can get through. Underneath the bridge and into Tassel Park. And then along Thornapple River Drive, looking about turning that into a one-way. So we wanted to pull some of the parking out of the park if we could, because that really, you know, pedestrian and. Vehicular conflicts is something we always want to minimize as much as we can. It's a safety concern and it really kind of breaks up the flow of the park. So turning Thornapple River Drive into a one-way of sorts. Would allow us to have safe angled parking along the edge of the park. I'm sorry, Mike, how much do we increase parking? Okay, so we'll, we'll get about double the current parking spaces by going with this layout. And we're really increased safety there, especially for parking backing up and people that are on that part of the park that interfaces with Thornapple River Drive. And then another main part, we'll go through on the next slide has a zoom in of the, the corner area where you can see the plaza. Yeah. Oh, sorry. If you could just back up one, one, sorry, just for one moment. The other part I want to talk about in this slide. Is just how, um, you can see along the riverfront, we really want to turn that into a, a corridor along the river where there's lots of connectivity, lots of river facing activities. Right now there's a path that goes along the river, but not a lot of it is really river facing. And there's not a lot of opportunities other than a few spots to get down and access the river, certainly not a lot of accessible opportunities. So that whole promenade along the river, we want to turn into a really engaging river focused space with a lot of opportunities for people to gather and, and recreate in a, in a variety of different ways, whether that's for a stroll. Sitting on swings, benches, getting down and interacting with the river itself in engaging ways. So one of the design problems that we had to solve here was that we've got the former toughy site. It's on the corner of Cascade Road and Thornapple River Drive, as many of you know. But the issue is if you've ever stood up there, it's not a place you want to hang out. It's busy, it's noisy. I mean, I have two small kids and I wouldn't have them up there without having very firm grips on their hands. As we were looking at the site, we walked down by where the former doctor's office is and you just notice instantly you're almost transformed. You're about ten foot below grade of. And where the parking lot is behind the doctor's office and it's much quieter. It's much, it's much safer, even though you're actually closer to the road in that location than you are at some of the places up on the toughy site. So our concept was to have a sunken plaza up on that corner. You'll have a small plaza up on the corner, which shows you, which helps you to arrive to the site, see down into the park, orient yourself. But then we would, the grade would drop as you arc around on that path where you can sort of see the, the two paths in the boulevard there. It would arc down till you got down to grade closer to the river where you could then access this sunken plaza where we would have trees, a water feature potentially that would start up at the road and then would cascade down. You know, pun intended, because that's one of our design concepts here is restoring some of that character of the namesake of Cascade itself, which is the cascading water. On which, you know, it helps derive the name of your community. So this would all help the, the lowering of the grade, the adding of the water feature and a lot of other. Vegetated and, and planted spaces would all help to make that space feel safer. It would help to mitigate noise from the road. It would really help nestle you in and increase the park space a lot and the usable space a lot. And it would really help to transform. And I mean, there's, there's not other, you know, parks that you can really picture that have this type of a wow factor right when you enter. And the good thing here is that we have to do something in this space anyway. We're not taking out a bunch of mature trees. We're not undoing things that are there and are beloved. We're really taking something that we need to transform and doing that in the best way possible to reinforce on what we're trying to do with the park. So that's what you can see. You can see kind of the blue water that would encircle this area potentially. Those green dots are trees that would be planted in a plaza-like setting with, with tables and chairs underneath, a lot of unique gathering space. Opportunities for a natural playground. We heard a lot about how there's not a lot for, to do with kids down in the, in the, the park currently. So not a playground that's got a bunch of multicolored. Equipment and big swings and a lot of really splashy stuff, more of a natural playground that, that capitalize on, capitalizes on more natural elements. Jay there is the doctor's office and repurposing that into an indoor-outdoor facility, as Mike mentioned before, another draw for the park. And then down where Ruby's gazebo is having that be the strong anchor hub down along the riverfront, still with a nice boardwalk space, a lot of larger gathering spaces. But areas where they work both for larger events or not necessarily events, but times of year when there's a lot going on and a lot of people out visiting the park. And also for the everyday when we have lots of spaces that complement each other. So it doesn't feel too grand. It feels right sized for Cascade. And the amphitheater there that's kind of built into the natural slope as we have now is really a small scale, natural style amphitheater for very small gatherings and without there even needing to be anything going on at Ruby's gazebo. And then moving towards the south end of the park, back towards the dam. This is really where we're focused on connection, restoration and just enhancing in a, a more targeted, minimalistic way. Where we could have, you know, additional upgraded fire pits, a low boardwalk going along the river with opportunities to access it, small beach areas, overlooks, different areas for gathering. Where some of the existing infrastructure is the bathroom and the pavilion, you know, enhancing those features and making those spaces stand out as unique among the park, but all working together. And then overlook at the dam, both below the dam and connections for kayak launches both above and below the dam as a part of the goals of being a water trail. And a lot of other things in here that we could talk about right now, but that's, that's the gist of the plan as it, it currently stands. These are a couple of sections, just to kind of help paint a picture for some of the different fields that we, we are hoping to get in the park. So you can see top left, the promenade section. So Ruby's gazebo, the naturalistic amphitheater, the board. uh, the boardwalk, how all these features tie into where that could be a, a more um active space along the river. Um, but still, a lot of smaller uses so that it can be used for the everyday. Um, up to the top right, when we come from underneath the bridge, we're going to need to um ramp up to connect up to where the doctor's office location is currently. Um, that lends itself nicely to have the opportunity for multiple overlooks there down along the river, uh, above and below, just more engagement along the river. And we have those, you know, opportunities because of the grading, so using some of the fun grading in the park to our advantage. Um, down on the bottom left, just a, a typical riverfront section of what it could look like. So, we want to show that in this promenade, um, we'll have an upper promenade where you can see on the plan, we're kind of trying to open up views, so we'll have the, you know, existing trees, but take out a lot of the obstructing of uh vegetation for the river. Um, keep a lot of that lower profile, then a lower boardwalk where you can get down right along the river. Um, we've been out there many times and um I was impressed by, with how many people fish there all the time. Um, and they're going to get down there and grapple down however they can. So, we want to make opportunities to where people can do that without wearing in their own footpath. So, a lower boardwalk, opportunity for outcropping where they can get down um and enjoy the river itself. And then the sunken plaza section on the bottom right, um, there's a lot of different ways we can do this, a lot of different materials. But the idea here is that you can see on the top right, from that upper plaza, you'll be able to see down into um the sunken plaza itself. That's going to allow you on that corner to look down into the park and say, okay, cool, I see, you know, something down there I want to go see and make it clear that the views will lead you into the park um with a sense of uh, you know, anticip- anticipation, anticipation and, and uh mystery and the sunken plaza, the water would collect and trickle around um for an interactive water feature for the, um, for the natural playground area. And the other key element here is that this feature needs to look good, whether or not that fountain is running or not. So, a lot of nice plantings, um, and other interests with rock outcroppings and um really, you know, nice craftsmanship, so that even when the water's not running, it looks like a feature and doesn't look like, oh, it's shut off, so um it's not as enjoyable in the space. It needs to function uh both ways. And uh, these are a few character images showing what some of these features might look like. You know, the bottom right is close to um what those lower boardwalks along the river uh might look like down closer to the river. Um, top right is a good um shot of what the underpass uh boardwalk would look like under the underpass right now. Like Mike said, we've got plenty of room down there, so that's, it's a really um, a, a good option. And then um, some of the uh pictures on the left-hand side show a little bit more of what that main promenade could look like. Now, it's not going to look exactly like that, um, but an idea of how we can have a main promenade and then other spaces, other paths weaving off that and creating other uh nook and niche kind of zones for people to enjoy. And it's a few other, you know, pop-up shop area. We did have a, a spot in there I forgot to mention, um, opportunity for one or two food trucks. So, another uh opportunity to have a draw to the park on a, on a weekly basis. Um, you know, swings, uh, uh, fire pit on the promenade, hammock areas. So, lots of features which um are going to help enhance the character uh of the park, add a lot of different elements that people can do in the park, be a draw, um, and help to amplify these spaces without doing um really momentous things um where we don't need to. Really cherishing what we have, celebrating what we have in the past and looking towards the future with this generational uh opportunity that we have, so.
Uh, and schedule-wise, uh, you know, we have the, working through this uh concept plan. Um, and then uh when we get approval to move forward to design, um, we permitting will be one of the major schedule impacts uh with the floodway. Uh, so we can be looking at like nine months or so for that process, so uh potential phasing of the project for, it happened for areas, um, but uh, there is, you know, hope for twenty twenty-six construction, but some with the floodway permitting, that would likely be twenty twenty-seven. Um, but once we kind of get the design a little bit more finalized and have more discussions with Eagle and the permitting agencies, um, we can kind of burn that up a little bit more. So, anything else from you guys, otherwise we'd open it up to feedback and questions.
I'll make a comment, everybody's looking at me. I uh, counting the, the parking, because I feel like that's one of Tassel Park's shortfalls right now is a lack of parking. And it looks to me like there's maybe around nine to ten additional spaces compared to what we currently have. But we're making the park larger and creating more uh opportunities for draw. And I'd like to see a way to maybe try to incorporate more parking if we can do that. But I, I do like the fact that we've moved the parking from the waterfront where people want to be and put it up by the street where they tend to not want to be. So, I mean, we're moving in the right direction here. I, I just, uh, and I don't know how you incorporate that, maybe, maybe there's another row kind of where you have the, the food truck area, which is neat, but um, I just, yeah.
And it could extend a little bit further toward the horseshoe parking with some tree removals, so kind of weighing the pros and cons there.
Uh, or maybe the area by G gets a little, little smaller, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying, I, I'd like to see more parking and.
Yeah, well, especially with the improvements, hopefully there'll be a lot more people in the park. Um, but one thing we also talked about is if you have, you know, larger events, say you have a Santa's house down there and there's going to be a bigger draw with the um Y Cliff property in the parking there and then the um parking up in the village to be able to have a shuttle. Um, so, you know, you can handle larger crowds without having an empty parking lot on a day-to-day basis. Um, so that's something that we'll want to look a little further into.
Or maybe we could incorporate it on the other side of the road.
Maybe, but maybe not.
I meant Cascade Road.
Oh, I thought you meant Verbergs.
Well, or, yeah.
Oh, I want that.
Either way, it, yeah, I'm just.
Trying to eliminate, we're trying to reduce curb cuts on Cascade Road generally.
Well, I, I wouldn't add a curb cut.
I haven't talked to anyone, this is strictly my opinion, but I can't imagine anybody in Cascade who wants Thornapple River Drive to be a one-way street, I think that's not a good idea.
There's a yellow line in these.
Too late.
This is a two-way, right?
The parking is one, a one-way.
Oh, the parking is one.
Yeah.
It shows the yellow down the middle.
But then it loops back one-way for the angled parking.
Oh, gotcha.
The road, yeah, sorry, sorry if that, that was confusing, yeah.
Sentiments.
Yes. I like, I do too. I like all the uh things on the west end and the kayak launches. I know you like to play on the word cascade, but I'm not fond of the waterfall or the splash pad. I think that's not necessary. I'd prefer to keep it even more simple. That's my opinion.
Prefer to rain on this parade, Sue?
Yep, sorry.
Welcome all opinions.
Well, we look forward to the DDA meeting too, where they can really get into it. I love how it's, it's got the, it's for all ages, the gathering area. One, genius to make it look attractive from the road as people are driving by and have classic brick plantings, that kind of stuff. But then to get people down quickly where you can actually use the space and you've got the grade anyways. And then hate how traditional splash pads look, but the fact that you can bring kids and it's, you get to use it the same way, but it blends in and, and still kind of keeps the focus on the river. There's a lot of green, I, I, I think it's, you had a really difficult task with all the topography and all the opinions and keep the good park, but make the other one nice to get across the street. I mean, I don't think people appreciate the amount of um issues and challenges and.
The topography is.
Requests.
Makes things a very challenging, but it's also a really fun opportunity, because a lot of parks don't have that. So, it like, taking advantage of, you know, this entire space and finding something that works well.
If the movement dirt can make hills.
Yep, exactly, that gets very expensive, so.
And we've heard for years that the riverfront, it's great, but it's underutilized and it's overgrown and we can spruce that up regardless. So, this, I, I think it's great. We can tweak it.
I have a question for Jade. Is it not possible to refurbish that doctor's office?
Um.
You can keep the footprint, but.
Yeah, I'm, that's a question for the engineers and the builders, but I believe that. Yeah, if, if you've been inside, I don't think we want to refurbish the inside. I don't know what, if the foundation can be saved, but um.
I've wanted to go inside, but.
I can get you in there.
You can still keep more of a traditional design versus that modern garage door feel, right? But the reality is that doctor, this footprint can stay, but.
Oh, so we can keep that and build.
And maybe a similar look, maybe, or classic, traditional look, but the actual building itself is.
Oh.
Not really fit for usable public space anymore.
Okay.
I can just touch on some of the partnerships too that go along with this project. So, we've got staff that's involved in this, both Eric and Dan are heavily involved in this, um, Grace is involved in this. Um, but also, we have to work with the state, we have to work with the county um from the road commission. So, this is a very fluid design, so what you see here is going to have changes as we move forward. So, parking may take care of itself, it may look completely different in the next iteration. But this here kind of shows an intent of how the, you know, kind of a tranquil space for the community. But more to come. They've actually done this really quickly, because uh clearly the DDA wants to get moving on it too. And I know I've got two DDA members here that are here tonight, um, but it's exciting.
Thank you.
I think it's also important to get input from the residents and what they think about this. Since this isn't going to be a knee-jerk reaction over the next two months or whatever, we have time to gather input from the residents of all ages throughout the area. What they like, what they don't like, and I believe that that doctor's office issue may be resolved very easily, because as I recall from previous conversation, uh, there's restrictions since it's so close to the river and in the floodplain as to what you can rebuild and what you can reuse. And I've walked down through the backside of the doctor's office along the river. Eh, I, I would not want to be down there during high-water time, because that foundation is sketchy at best. But it, that's my two cents.
And we have had a preliminary meeting with Eagle, just to get them aware of the design and the project, um, which will just help expedite the permitting process when we get to that next level. Um, there weren't any, you know, major red flags, uh, so that was a good first meeting. Um, but as um Manager Smith mentioned, there's a lot more discussions to be had uh with them.
I'll just add that the, the doctor's office looks very cool from the outside, but it, it is just side view. But it's not an actual log cabin, so when you get in, it's a little less, you know, it's, it's not as overwhelming as.
Beyond rustic?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's very plain, I would say, on, on the inside, other than needing a multitude of, of different things to make it, you know, safe and usable for public. I don't think people would be able to run, they got inside.
The good way to say it, fair enough.
Uh, one of the benefits of it being so close to the river now though, is with, through our, you know, meeting we had with Eagle, is that we do have kind of rights to that space. If finished floor would need to be about a foot above floodplain elevation, but um we'd never be able to put a, a building out that close to the river now, just would never happen. So, that's one of the benefits that of, and reason we show, you know, the potential of having another building there, um, be a smaller, you know, have a kind of unique uses to it, is that we'd never be able to do it in any other situation. So, yeah, we, we'll have to bring it up to code, it probably would be all brand-new, but um, you know, it's a, it's a neat opportunity and one that we've, we've told, you know, is very doable, we just need to, you know, have it, that finished floor one foot above the flood.
That building was set for demolition two years ago.
Jade, that was you, you saved. Awesome, thank you very much and thank you for um your flexibility with you at the DDA meeting and we'll get the concept out in the public.
Great, thank you very much.
Very much. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Article five, public comments. Now's the time to comment on anything on tonight's agenda, so that would include the fire department strategic plan, also the concept for Tuffy and Tassel that you just saw. We also have the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget, uh, purchase of a generator and then um river sediment control for the Thornapple River Special Assessment District above the dam and then also the potential zoning amendment. So, if anyone has comments on those issues, welcome and please limit your comments to three minutes for this fairness to everyone here. State your name and address for record-keeping, I see we have one ready to go, welcome.
Good evening, Julie Rockwell, eighteen sixty-eight Sterling Oaks Boulevard. Um, the last two presentations were phenomenal and they were the bright spots of our tonight, of tonight. Unfortunately, the imminent issue that we spent the last hour, um, the previous hour discussing, unfortunately, there was no Zoom link, so I think maybe part of our community was left out, that was, wasn't published. Um, but I, 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 listening to it, I'm trying to like reflect and understand all of this. And I, every time we're here, we keep kind of getting, I keep interpreting the same thing, so I want to do something a little different. If you live in Cascade Township, we just quick raise your hand or stand up, either way. Anyone who lives there in, um, anyone.
A public comment to the board when the board.
No, this is part of the public comment here, please, ma'am.
But you're making comments to the board, so if you want to.
It is, I, 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 please let me, let me, this interactive, please. How many people have a business in Cascade? Keep your hands up if they were up before. How many people have a business here in Cascade Township? How many people here do business with people in Cascade Township? Now, I'm going to ask the board, this is the public comment, you can interact or you cannot. Every time I keep hearing it, all I keep hearing is you guys are too dumb and you're too late. You don't like it because you don't understand it. I think we understand it. Does anybody think they understand it? Because I think I understand it. I've combed through three hundred pages, I find the little hidden things that you're limiting people from cutting down their trees, subdividing their property, and there are people in this community who do not even realize that you are stripping hundreds to millions of dollars of their value away. I bet, and you don't want to have any financial analysis for it. So, I don't think you're probably looking at lowering their taxes. You're wanting to increase public roads in this area and increase the tax responsibility for the residents. Yet, we're too dumb and we're too late. So, you, we have public comment and people come here and they pour their heart out. We've seen business owners crying over this. I've been places and overheard conversations of all that you're taking away from them and their values, and you sit here and tell us we're too dumb and we're too late. We're not, you have not finalized this and you have the opportunity to listen still to the public. You're trying to cram this through before meet more people come. I come three meetings ago, there was no one here, then there were more people, then there were more people. Today, we had the chamber here, we had people from disability advocates here. We have associations with over thirty-five hundred members in this community who care about the people who are the residents and the business owners. We are not too late and we are not too dumb. So, I think it's time to reexamine what public comment means and the people who are here, people are listening and the news media is starting to pay attention, and I know you're trying to cram this through before people know, but we are not too late.
I don't usually do this, so I'm a little bit nervous. Um, my name is Carol T. Meyer, thirty-two oh one Beeler Drive, across the street from the chief. I've been in Cascade all my life. My father was township treasurer years and years ago. Right before he retired, he was instrumental in re-electrifying, re-electrification of the dam. I wanted to ask the gentleman that did the presentation, there's a monument to my dad close to the bottom of the dam, will that still stay there?
Yeah, I mean.
They may be like restored.
Yeah.
You know, some of the different signs have faded and stuff, but yes, nothing will be taken away.
Okay. Because it was moved one time, which is fine, it can be moved, but I'm concerned that it's just going to be tossed someplace, so. I think Cascade Township is a great place to live. The fire department was very important to my dad. Um, he was a volunteer firefighter, he got run over by a fire truck. I think the communication is great, I guess I'm not hip to whatever else is going on, but thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Time for me to go home and go to bed.
Doug Lee, um, I sent each of you an email with a letter, really what my intentions are. Okay, I'm not here to hold progress back, I'm mainly here to let you understand that the things, times have changed. Our community no longer accepts and can, our kids can't afford to stay here. Empty nesters can't, aren't going to buy a house, they're going to try to downsize. We're not going to, we're, you're not going to put up a house of eight hundred square feet, it's not ever going to get built, no one's ever going to build. We're not gonna, we're, you're not gonna put up a house of eight hundred square feet. It's not ever gonna get built. No one's ever gonna build anything. So if we're gonna meet the needs of the, the people who need housing and wanna stay in this community. You need to change how you consider your residential zoning and your, your, instead of thinking of acres. You should be more designing it based on how many parking spaces they could have. So if you can put twelve, you meet the parking requirements, you should have as many residential places and businesses that, that can have. Uh, be able to handle. You can't, you have to get away from acres. Acres don't, in business space doesn't, you don't buy property based on acres. You buy residential properties based on acres. But business is, is square feet. Okay, you could put a lot of business in a square feet, not talking about acres. So instead of talking about acres, talk about parking spaces and not limit so that you could put eight hundred square foot studio flats and a thousand square foot. Or eleven hundred square foot to meet the needs of the community that wants to stay here and live here. Our kids aren't gonna afford, cannot afford a three thousand square foot home. It's just not gonna happen. Our homes have all doubled since two thousand seventeen. So everybody says yay, where values are going up. It's great for us, but it's not good for our kids. Okay, so we have to think through the community, what we wanna build in our village. And the villages, as they've done in the eighteen hundreds and you can go down the old main streets and low Cedar Springs. Carson City and they're all buildings there and above them are, are rental units. It's been that way for hundreds of years. Okay, when I talk about the township, the B one district being stagnant, it is stagnant because there's been such limitations on its growth. No investor wants to invest. So when you're making these form based codes, my only objection is I don't really see a whole lot differ than what was before. You're just sort of picking deck chairs on the Titanic. Okay, so the only way to make this a thriving community is to throw out and, and come up with a new plan. That meets the needs of the community. I want progress. Unless you can make it affordable, an investment for investor, you'll never have an investor. No one's ever gonna invest in our village and we're gonna have the same thing we've always had. Okay, your proposed code, we're gonna have the same village, B one district as you always had.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kim Southwick. I am with the Greater Regional Alliance of Realtors again. And um, I'm here in place of Doug who was not able to, to make it. And um, we just really want to reiterate the fact that private property owners are really voicing their concern. Over the magnitude of these proposed changes, so please take that into consideration. Um, I think everybody wants what's best for the township. And before you take further action, you know, possibly do an analysis to study the financial impact down the road. And how this is going to actually affect um, residential and commercial. Property owners, their property values, people wanting to live here and do business here. Um, the economic impact and the township's tax base. And of course, we are happy to be a resource for that. And um, again, private property rights are special and unique. Property values, business activity and the freedom of independent property owners is at stake. And that's so very important. So, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for your time. Great presentations today. First name Mark, last name Ann Sarah, seventeen ninety nine Platinum Falls in Ada. I am a landlord in Cascade Township, paying many of taxes. Partnership in a property at twenty eight forty two Thornapple River Drive, which is Ariva Salon. A very horrible building many, many years ago, if you can remember, that we bought for two hundred thousand dollars and spent three hundred thousand dollars. Additionally, to make it what it is today, to make it look beautiful on the river. I'm also partner in a property at the end of Cascade Road and Twenty Eighth Street, which is eighty thousand square, eighty thousand square feet where Foling is, all the way to transform. And I'm a little worried about where we're going here with the taxpayer dollars we're spending. To buy these properties, you beautify Cascade Township, which I'm all for. Because our tenants pay their taxes and we pay our taxes. And I wanna make sure that we're using it in the right fashion. To build a community. What takes me back is a comment that Madam Supervisor made on tape in the last meeting or two. At forty four fifty three and over an hour and some change meeting, we literally were so thoughtful. And purposeful and so restrictive, which I don't care because all the developers eh, can suck it anyways. Residential and commercial. My group owns seven million dollars of property in this corridor. I find your comments very hurtful and resentful. Thank you.
And I do apologize, those were poorly made comments.
Hi, I'm Michelle Lower again, twenty nine ninety two Overlook Summit. And I was at that meeting. And I think that in context, although unfortunate, it could be understood that there were developer after developer criticizing. This ordinance, the proposed ordinance, many of whom it was clear had not read it. So I just wanted to put that on the record because I was there and witnessed it. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Joe Erdman. I'm here tonight to talk to about the zoning problem. Um, I'm the owner of Cascade Point Complex and the building where Lima is. And I wanted to speak about something fundamental to the vision we all share for Cascade. Which is creating a true village atmosphere, one that's walkable, vibrant and connected. A genuine village cannot exist on commercial development alone. It needs people. Residents who live, shop and engage within the same space every day. When we remove or even restrict residential units from commercial areas, we lose the heartbeat of that community. What makes a village thrive isn't just the businesses, it's the people. Who bring them to life during and after nine to five hours. Including residential units alongside commercial development creates a twenty four hour ecosystem instead of a nine to five corridor. Residents support local shops, keep streets alive and safe. And foster a sense of belonging the Cascade residents have consistently asked for. Without that balance, we risk creating a sterile commercial strip. Like some of the areas that we already have. These areas are, are drive to areas, destination areas. Instead of lively, walkable village at this board and the master plan have envisioned. Other successful communities from Ada to East Grand Rapids to Rockford have all demonstrated this principle. They have embraced mixed use zoning, allowing residents to live near shops, restaurants and green space. The results are clear, stronger tax base, higher property values, less congestion. And more community engagement. Cascade residents have voiced this vision repeatedly in public forums, surveys and planning sessions. And yet, certain members of this board choose to ignore these voices, choosing instead to push their own personal agendas. In the end, it doesn't matter if a setback is two foot or three foot. What matters is flexibility. Seeing this vision through each other's eyes. What matters is that the future development will take place if it's economically viable to do so. People here want a village core where people can live, walk and gather, not just a drive through community as it is now. That is not a developer's wish, that's a community's request. I urge the board to come together, align around this shared goal and act in unity to make this possible. Each of you is elected or appointed to help shape Cascade's future. And that future depends on collaboration and understanding. Trying to push your own agenda. Such as a setback only divides us. Piecemeal decision making only delays or diminishes the final result. Let us honor the intent of our residents by ensuring that residential opportunities are woven into the commercial fabric.
Thank you, Dr. Urban.
This village, this village, where it's a community, not just a place to visit.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ashley Schaefer. Um, I own and operate two businesses in Cascade Township, but I am here as a resident. I recognize the time and effort that went into the zoning ordinance and that is appreciated. However, the details are concerning in regards to impeding on private property rights. The inability to expand housing opportunities, the very real concern of lowering property values and decreasing tax revenues. While I'm itemizing these as bullet points, the details and both short term and long term effects are profound. We only have three minutes to speak, so it's impossible to detail how important this is. Truthfully, I feel it hasn't been thoroughly surveyed by those who it will truly affect. I know that a survey has gone out, but it's hard to. Say if those people truly understand what's happening to their properties. I don't doubt an incredible amount of time went into creating the ordinance. But I am requesting the board take more time to discuss the effects that this will have on residents and businesses. I would also like to comment on something that was said earlier by the supervisor. The idea that successful, educated residents would take time out of their evening. To be here and make baseless claims on an ordinance that they didn't read. Or don't understand is not only false, but highly offensive. If you care about the voices and concerns of the public like you say you do, please make that known. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bob Camp. I do own property in Cascade Township. Um, and I know it's not fun planning. I know how much time you've spent. It's not easy to represent everyone. But I am a realtor. I've been in numerous townships with planning. And I have numerous clients always that say, I don't want that built there. No one likes development. No one likes change. We all like it to stay like it was, but it's unrealistic. It's inevitable. Everywhere else is expanding and. Cuz we have a shortage. You have some of the biggest lots in this entire greater Grand Rapids area. And yet I hear we want green space, we want green space. And that's fine. You're doing green space with what you've just demonstrated here and other places. And if the public wants it, the trouble with the surveys that always come out is who shows up? People that don't want development or don't own bigger parcels of land. And yet they wanna, they don't want that developed. Well, people bought that with. A master plan in mind at the time of what they could do with it and that's being taken away. If you want green space, then raise the money and buy green space. And the whole entire Cascade Township can pay for it, but don't hinder someone's property rights by taking their development rights away. I know it's tough and I know it's, but you're not representing the people who always show up. It, because there's way more smaller parcel owners. Than there are bigger parcel owners. So of course you're gonna get a survey that shows, hey, we don't want that, this is what we want. But you gotta represent everyone, not just the, those people alone. And I'm just gonna tell you from experience, businesses are not gonna build here. If you put so many restrictions on these big, beautiful buildings or whatever you want. It, I don't know if anybody knows what costs are today to, to construct anything, let alone private roads versus. Public roads. Private roads are outlandish. And now you want public roads in certain, it's just unfeasible. And construction costs are humongous today. I know there's so many builders out here that say, I just tell everybody right off the get. You gotta have a million bucks on top of your land. Or you can't build at least anything nice. And, and you can make all the restrictions, but businesses will not come here. If you make it so unfeasible that they're gonna say, don't go to Cascade. Uh, you'll never make it. You gotta draw people. I, you gotta have a balance. I appreciate your time. I know it's tough. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Grozier, sixty five oh nine Wendell. As a resident of Cascade Township, I'm here to speak. I'm also here to speak as a realtor, representing my client's personal property rights. I'm very concerned about the proposed zoning changes and the impact they may have on personal property rights and property values. These decisions will shape our community for years to come and it's essential that they are made with full transparency and clear communication. Cascade Township has struggled with transparency in the past and I strongly urge the board to prioritize open dialogue. Accessible information and community education before moving forward. Residents deserve full, to fully understand what is being proposed and how it may affect them.
Thank you. Anyone virtually? No. Article six, approval of tonight's consent agenda. Is there discussion or motion?
Move to approve, support.
It's a motion by trustee Nordike, supported by trustee Shipley to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carried. Financial actions specifically invoices scheduled to be paid on October nine. Discussion or motion? Twenty third. Oh. Thank you. Make a motion to approve the financial actions?
Or.
Motion by Treasurer Corstange, supported by trustee Nordike to approve tonight's financial actions. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carried. Having no unfinished business, first item of new business zero six two twenty twenty five. Consider approval of introduction of fiscal year twenty twenty six proposed budget. Manager Smith, and do you wanna say anything before Director Nantini?
Um, this will be the third time we've gone over, done a couple of work sessions. Lorna and her staff have spent a lot of time and all the department heads putting the budget together. She's gonna do a quick overview. Tonight's the introduction and we'll be asking for the adoption of the twenty twenty six budget at the next board meeting. I'll let Lorna take it.
Thank you. Good evening, Manager Smith. Good evening, Board Supervisor. The budget packet is fairly thick. It starts out with a four or five page letter. That I will scroll through and allow the audience to read at their leisure. The heart of the presentation tonight is the more colorful, maybe uh, charts and graphs will keep the uh. Uh, audience awake after the great presentations before this and you slam into the, the budget numbers. Here we have our organizational chart. The township budget is typically broken into two areas. We have the general fund and all other funds. This chart is very busy and actually that's the point of this chart, showing that there are a lot of different activities. That go on in the general fund. A single millage rate um, funds the general fund. And you see all the different departments in that fund. The next page is all other funds in a single chart. I will point out that the DDA, the Downtown Development Authority. Uh, has a proposed almost sixteen and a half million dollar budget. Because this sixteen and a half million dwarfs all of the other slices. This is not represented on the chart in the pie graph. If it were, this would be about eighty percent of a single chart. If it were, this would be about eighty percent of a single chart. You see the fire department, fire fund, we're looking at about a four-point-two-million-dollar expenditure budget. Another large one is the IRF, the Infrastructure Replacement Fund, at one-point-eight million. And we have a building inspection fund also at just shy of three-point-four million. Highlights of the next year. In the administrative and manager's office, we're proposing a new activity called IT, Information Technology. That doesn't mean that the township has existed without computers up till now. It does mean, though, that all of those expenditures were spread among many different spots. And it was, it's a little challenging to manage when you have one project planned and you have potentially four or five different funding areas. And so if we have one IT department, we can gather the costs in one area. And then if you look at the next green bullet point, the cost allocation plan is how we gather the costs of running the township and spread it and allocate it out to the rest of the funds and the areas. This IT department will now be part of that cost allocation plan so that the IT costs will be spread among all the departments and funds that use IT rather than, say, the four or five places that we have funding for it. So it's a much more equitable way to fund. In the building fund, revenue is forecasted unit by unit, that's municipality by municipality, because we are a little unique in Cascade in our intergovernmental cooperation, that we have a single building inspection fund. We cover about ten or eleven inspectors, and that includes fire inspection. And we do this for seven municipalities, us being one of them. So we'd have great economies of scale. Sorry, I'm rambling now. So this revenue is forecasted unit by unit. The building department manager, department head, keeps in touch with the other supervisors. And this is actually based on planned construction. And this fund balance must stay in the building fund per state law. The infrastructure revolvement, replacement fund, excuse me. There is a one-and-a-half-million-dollar project dedicated to land acquisition. And that in the capital improvement plan is an annual million and a half dollars. So those dollars are budgeted. If there are no projects, that money will be rebudgeted to the next year.
Lauren, I just want to clarify, that money we found sitting in a, from previous leadership management, we found that sitting there that was slated to use to extend sewer and water to the area directly east of the airport for industrial development. We moved that over and then that's we reassign that to.
To the best of my knowledge, yes, that's the history. And I believe that also our legal counsel and auditors advised a few years ago that this is available for township projects and for board appropriation. Also in this IRF fund is one and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for an infrastructure study that the fire chief had mentioned earlier. This is not a hundred and fifty thousand strictly to look at fire. This is for all the township's building needs, including community space, meeting space, gathering space. Other highlights, if we look at the DDA or the Downtown Development Authority, there's a streetlights line item that will be brought forward. There is both as a revenue and an expenditure, a fifteen-million-dollar capital project. This is a placeholder. This is not saying, by any stretch of the imagination, that Tassel Park would be fifteen million dollars or a village improvement as a whole is fifteen million dollars. This fifteen million dollars represents the amount of debt that the DDA could issue and afford. So that's pretty much your top end. There's both a revenue and expenditure, and the DDA board would have to approve. And then the township board would have to approve any revenues and expenditures. As part of this, but and the timing, we talked just tonight, we heard about timing, so. And I made a couple of notes too, because I have to get moving on soliciting bids for bond council. The twenty twenty-six budget also includes funding for a Downtown Development Authority manager. And also funds for some bus transportation through Hope Network, is an ongoing project. Parks and Facilities is a big portion of the general fund and keeps everybody running. The Parks and Facilities activities are funded many different spots. Mentioned the revenue budget is increasing to increase the, to reflect the increased field usage. And the planning department, the last two years, we've had a sizable line item for consultants, but appears that large projects should be complete by the end of this year. So the planning budget is decreasing. And hotel licensing as a revenue is running smoothly. And when this project program first started, there was a larger revenue boost because the initial application has a lot more work for the township. And now we're in the renewal, license renewal, that is a much easier project process for the township, and it's reflected in lower fees. So that revenue is going down. That doesn't mean we have any less hotels. It just means we have a fully functioning project program. Trees, installation and maintenance, this ninety thousand dollars has been in the budget for, I'm guessing, three to five years. Just want to point out where it is.
Two years.
Two years?
Yes.
Wow. Okay, thank you. I'm corrected. But there is ninety thousand dollars in the twenty twenty-six budget. And it's in the engineering area. In a previous year, it wasn't planning. Here is a busy slide on personnel. We'll say that the general fund has three and a half fewer positions because a department was outsourced. Most staff will see a step increase plus a cost of living increase. We're capping healthcare costs. There are no new positions at the moment. As a late addition from the board work session, we have a very specific dollar amount set aside as a personnel and contingency. And this dollar amount was designed to balance the budget. So if anybody thinks that there is a great, great meaning behind one-hundred-seventy-three-thousand-three-hundred-sixty-three, that's the number that got our full revenues to equal our full expenditures. And this use of these dollars requires a board approval to use. Including these dollars in personnel, because it's called personnel contingency, makes the category look like there's a three-point-nine percent increase in personnel costs. If you look at the actual costs, though, we're looking at about a one-point-one percent decrease. And most of that is due to three and a half fewer positions. I have a short chart talking about MERS. That's the retirement plan. That is the old defined benefit plan that has been closed for quite some years. It was very fashionable for units to, for municipalities, to treat retirement benefits as pay-as-you-go. If somebody retires and draws a pension, that's when, when the township would fund that. Now, in the last fifteen years, it's stylish to set aside money and let those dollars grow so that when people retire, there are dollars there. And there's currently about a five and a half, five-point-six-million-dollar funding gap. So the township is paying about a half-million dollars a year. And you'll see that number is projected to rise for about the next fifteen years. Until at that point, we would be considered fully funded. The next couple of pages show our debt service. We have very little debt for a township. This debt is, the graph, the chart, shows the principal remaining, not how much we're spending on debt every year. So you see the DDA has some existing debt. It will be paid off in twenty twenty-eight. We have a brownfield redevelopment authority that twenty twenty-six is the first year. And that is being paid through captured taxes, so the project is paying for itself. We have an open space bond that will be paid off very soon. And the fire station that just started, we paid off in twenty forty-one. Here's a chart with some selected fund balances. Fund balances, you can think of them as savings account. Most, most of our funds are doing really well. Have to point out for the DDA, this nine percent fund balance, that's with a fifteen-million-dollar project. And the IRF is looking like it's going from a two-point-eight million to a one-point-three-million fund balance. And that's that million and a half-dollar project I mentioned earlier that through the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, this million and a half will be put in the budget annually. The fire department is a little lower in fund balance than I'd like to see, and we are keeping a watchful eye on that. And I can say, and the chief mentioned earlier, fire engines are expensive. And in twenty twenty-five, the fire fund paid for a million-dollar fire engine cash out of savings. So money builds up, and then you spend it really quickly in one shot. So that's, this is a watchful item. From there, folks that like to see charts and graphs, we have some. Just skip through them. Point out the library. This is their fund balance. It was up here in the two, two-and-a-half-million-dollar range, took a big decrease. And if you look around and wander through the library, you'll see why, because we had a really big project in the last year and a half. And you see this, this spike in expenditures in twenty twenty-four. DDA, likewise, we are looking at this fifteen-million-dollar project. All planned pathways and open space. These are millage-based funds. Pathways, we tend to collect dollars. And when they build up to enough, we spend them on a project, and then we're back in the rebuilding phase. And of course, you have police. You see the fire just spending. That million-dollar fire engine took a big, big chunk. We also have two special assessment districts. These were resident-directed, resident-petitioned. And the IRF, that looks like a big dip in fund balance, again, that is a million-and-a-half-dollar placeholder project. At the back, we have, for a small, for a township, we have a lot of very finite millage rates. We have a handful expiring at the end of twenty twenty-seven. So there is already talk administratively about exploring options and developing strategy.
Hey, Lorna, just, can we look at that? It says parks. Is that the open space?
Yeah.
So that's, I just, to clarify, we don't have a parks millage. This isn't you. I'm just, for everyone listening. There is no parks millage. It's called the open space millage. That's been its name since before I got here. And it's specifically to pay off the debt from Peace Park and Burden Park.
Thank you.
It's just hard, it's just hard to, it's kind of misleading calling it the open space fund.
Yep, thank you. And to the state.
You should change that because there is no parks millage.
Thank you. For the state, open space fund is considered parks. So counting wise, no, accounting-wise, you sometimes see parks, but thank you for that correction, supervisor, and we'll update that slide.
That makes sense. I didn't think about it that way. Thank you.
And then we have pictures. Further in the packet, here is the draft of the resolution that the board will be asked to vote on November fifth at the next board meeting. And because we off, oh, and we have two or three more pages, that the, this page and this page is the legal budget. When the board adopts a budget, this is the level of numbers that comprises a legal budget. Couple more pages. And it's very common in the budget process for a fee schedule to be included. So there's no board action required or board authorization requested because these have been authorized by the board in the past. It's just the budget process is a handyspot to recap and just collect all the fees and put them in, because this is the first year this was done. You see, the format of each page is a little inconsistent, because I truly just took them out of where I found them and put them in. We may look at making this a little, little more cohesive in future, but that's simply a formatting. That's not, not a meaningful change.
Just to comment on that, so this is very common for communities to have a fee schedule that's adopted on an annual basis and that's available for residents to view in one location on the website. That's never existed before. So this is the start of that process, and then by the end of twenty twenty-six, we'll have a full fee schedule that will encompass all departments, be very well-formatted and available in a standalone location on the website.
And that is the end of the budget presentation.
Thank you.
Aye.
Comments, discussion, questions?
This budget has been hashed over, and nice job presenting every nickel and dime that we residents pay. Appreciate that. A lot of these budget items that you see, thousand dollars for a fire truck, those are, I'm sorry, a million dollars for a fire dress. Yeah, that's a little tiny one. Million dollars for a fire truck is forecasted for several reasons. Number one, after twenty years, that fire truck is useless as far as your insurance rates are concerned. Matt Groger is over there nodding his head. He understands this. So the money is put aside on an annual, on a annual basis for those large expenditures like the fire trucks. It's all part of planning, and we heard earlier that poor planning per results in poor performance. And not only this existing board, but the previous boards before have worked hard to keep the township in the pink and healthy financial area instead of running a deficit and stealing money from one, one program to another. So with that, I would like to make a motion that we approve the introduction of the proposed budget.
Support. Additional comments? It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by treasurer Korsdaj, as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item zero six three twenty twenty-five, consider approval of generator purchase for fire station two and administration office. Andrew Smith?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take this, and then I have Danzwick, City Police Director and Fire Chief is here as well. So when the admin building was purchased on Tahoe Drive, I believe, five or six years ago, that is actually the backup EOC, Emergency Operations Center for a fire station for any emergency that would happen in the township. It does not have a generator, so in case of a power.
So it, it, in case of a power outage that's needed there to run a proper EOC. And then also, if the, um, power goes out, there is connectivity that comes into that building that feeds out to all of our other buildings throughout the township. So when that goes out, they don't have access to all of the, um, information that we have. So it's important that we get the, the generator, um, at the admin building. And then during this process of, um, going out to bid and searching for a vendor to complete that for us. Generator at station two is at its end of life. So we worked with the contractor who put in the generator at station one during construction. They're one of the ones that bid on it, talked to them about pricing, they did price out one for the fire station as well. You can read in the RBA, we've got the budget, um, for this in the twenty twenty. We had some dollars in twenty twenty-four that rolled over to twenty twenty-five. We also have this in our CIP for twenty twenty-six. So as far as the dollars are concerned, we have the dollars with the contingencies to bring in, um, DTE to run the gas lines and for the actual installation. So this is a complete project cost request for us, not just the generator, but this will be installation and the utility cost as well. So, um, I think I touched on everything else. Unless Chief or Dan have more to say? Yeah.
We answered questions, but yeah.
Proceed Shipley?
Yeah, I have something to say. Um, our township is blessed or condoned with potential disasters. Emergency operating centers are essential in case of a disaster. Did any of you know that we have an emergency operations center al- alternate right here in the township? In case something happens to the main center? Without this power, without a hundred and ten volts to operate it, that EOC alternate location don't work. So it's essential that in the bigger scope of things for protection. We consider having backup generators for things like our administration building. And a backup generator that is reliable for station two. And with that, I make a motion that we approve the generator purchase for fire station number two and administrative office. As budgeted for and as asked for.
Support.
Additional comments or questions? It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Rizzi, to approve the purchase of the two generators as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item zero six four, twenty twenty-five. Consider approval of contract for the Thornapple River Special Assessment District Sedimentation Control and Mitigation Planning Study. Andrew Smith?
Thank you supervisor. So back in twenty twenty-one, the residents along Thornapple River petitioned the township to create a special assessment to, um, manage some issues along the river, one of it being, um, managing the sedimentation that is getting into the river. And, um, one of the things that we've been working on, and they put together a strategic plan last year, uh, we laid out some goals. And, um, one of the goals for this year was to complete a sedimentation study to see where sediment's getting into the river in that portion. How to mitigate it, and then to put a plan moving forward to make sure that in the future, we're controlling this, uh, moving forward. We worked with, uh, PLM, who is our, uh, Lake, Lake and Land Management. They deal with our, with the weeds and treating the river in that section. And they do not perform that service. So we turned to Prina Newhoff, who acts as engineers on staff that are well versed in this, came and presented to the committee. Put together a proposal, which is what you have before you tonight, and they're ready to go. Uh, we took this to the SAD committee last week or the week before. And presented this, um, had some discussion, it meets the needs of the SAD. The funds are definitely there, um, for the, for this kind of study, and then also when the study is complete, to put together an implementation plan afterwards for years to come. So Eric, I don't, do you have more to say? Okay. But I don't think any questions are?
I think this was, uh, overdue and, uh, I think everybody's excited for it to move forward and looking forward to seeing what, what, what is in the study. So what's the result, I guess I should say, and with that, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Support. Any additional comments or questions? It's a motion by trustee Rizzi, supported by treasurer Korstang. To approve the proposed contract with, um, with Prina Newhoff?
Yes.
For the sedimentation control study, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item zero six five, twenty twenty-five. Consider approval of resolution for introduction of amending zoning ordinance. This is what we had the work session on at six o'clock. One thing we could do is have another work session and table, just because it's nine o'clock at night. We can have the discussion now or we can push it off a meeting. Depending on what the trustees want.
Maybe we should have some discussion? Like maybe, you know, I don't know, work through this for another half hour or so and then have a work session later to finish it up or how do we want to?
The only thing is, I just don't want, when we talked about some of the, um, for example, the density thing, um, I don't want people to feel rushed putting it in, um, a proposed amendment, amended ordinance. If, if it gives us time and you guys more time to look at it.
I think.
Just that we need to give the staff some direction before we go into the work session, that's, I guess, what I was getting at.
I know, A- Andrea and Chris went and worked on a amendment and a resolution to pass tonight with the conversation, with some of the comments that were, um, given during the work session. But I know there is still some clarity to get from our, uh, township attorney on some language. And then also, the, um, the bonus structure for the village needs to be, be looked at. So, but we'll do whatever we need to do.
Good job getting that.
I'd love to see it. Both of them, I think we need to get to it. Uh, we've been at this for a long time, but, uh, it'd be good to see what's back with zoning, whether we do that now or before the final. It's hard to you, but.
I heard a lot of public comments saying, stop rushing it through, so I'd like to stop rushing it through.
For a good discussion, or does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we table it. And, uh, have a work session and then vote on it. Is that the appropriate motion?
I would just to be to table it.
All right, I'll make a motion to table it.
Support.
It's a motion by, uh, trustee Nordeig, supported by treasurer Korstang to, oh, sorry, I thought I heard two and I gave you the benefit of the doubt. We're talking about trustee, trustee Rizzi?
You can give it to whoever you want.
To, um, to table this agenda item for, to a further meeting.
Do we table off for you, Grace, or do you want just this one?
Postpone the benefit. Postpone is the correct word. To postpone, um.
Item zero six five, zero six six and zero six seven?
Yeah, you can't, you can't do the other two. If you postpone the first one, you need to.
That's my point.
Yeah.
Right.
So we have to do separate motions of each agenda item, or can we do one motion that?
You should do a separate vote for each agenda item.
Alright, so first, let's vote on, um, item.
Zero six.
Zero six five, which trustee Nordeig, trustee Rizzi seconded. Excited, please, oh, we don't need a roll call for postponing. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That agenda item is postponed. Next, item zero six six, twenty twenty-five. Related to that, consider approval of a resolution repealing the private street ordinance. Is there a motion or discussion on this agenda item?
Make a motion that we postpone. Zero six six, there's two, zero two five.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Nordeig, supported by trustee Rizzi, to postpone item, agenda item zero six six, twenty twenty-five. Specifically approval of resolution repealing the private streets ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Last, I know of new business this evening, zero six seven, twenty twenty-five. Consider approval of resolution to repeal subdivision ordinance, also related to the zoning ordinance. Is there a motion or discussion?
Make a motion to postpone zero six seven five, or zero six, seven, there's twenty twenty-five. Support.
Additional discussion? That's a motion by trustee Nordeig, supported by treasurer Korstang, to postpone agenda item zero six seven, specifically resolution repealing subdivision ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Having no additional new business and no items for discussion, Article eleven, public comments, now is the time to comment on anything, whether it was related to this evening or not. And please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for record.
I am Doug Lee, and I do want to be short. I did want to preempt all the board comments, I've been to several of these meetings. And there's comments directed to almost like a chastising of individuals in the audience because of our comments. I just want to remind you that we're here as unpaid. We don't get paid. Part of the role when you decide to run for public office is you're in this hot, like, hot seat many times, it's just part of the job. Um, you can't complain about it because you ran for it, okay? Um, you can't complain about the time you put in for it, because many of you doubled your salary when you first came in office. So again, I don't get paid, you guys get paid, I don't want to hear that I got a lot of time in something. You don't like the job, then you should resign, just part of the job. I'm not here to be anybody's enemy. I'm a, I'm practicing governments in my community like everybody should. Okay, we just all have to be civil, we work together, okay? I'm a reasonable person, but I don't like to be lectured to, thank you.
Hello, Elizabeth Cram, thirty-four ten Winterberry Court. I want to say I really love the pumpkin in the pavilion. It makes my day every time I drive by, so whose ever idea that was.
That's Mr. Swick, Parks and Facilities Director, that's all him.
It was a great idea, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to just thank you for, uh, tabling stuff. I, I've served on enough planning stuff and to take a deep breath, I know you've spent a ton of time and you're like, really? But you'll be happy you did when you're done and you say, I feel good about it, we hurt everybody. And we took the time to do it right, and I appreciate you taking the time. And the only other comment I want to make is, we've been on a roll for twelve years. Everywhere in the country. Tax money's coming in, because as soon as you take a property and develop it, the taxes go up. And all those projects you want to do can be paid for. But if you kill development, that property does not develop, in fact, it hurts it. And the values go down and the existing people that live here, their taxes have to go up to pay for those kind of things. So I think you got away the big picture and I appreciate you taking the time.
Hi, Dan Lauer, Michelle's husband, so it's the same address. I just want to compliment you all for what you're doing. But I like to remind you how challenging it is for some of us to follow these constantly changing documents and ordinances and things of that nature. So version control and transparency of version control and what's passed and what's present and what's being considered. If there's any way that you can make it clear to the average citizen, it would probably be appreciated by everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tara Seeta Long, thirty-seven oh five Charlevoix Drive Southeast. I just want to express my appreciation for paving over the traffic islands throughout this area. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, that was awesome, Mr. Swick. Thanks for coming. Any additional comments, whether in person or virtually? Any other comments, Andrew Smith?
Yeah, just a couple announcements tonight, um, next week is Halloween. And we've got a new event that, uh, Parks and Rec is putting on, it's called the Halloween Hustle. It's going to be a one-mile fun run for the kids, come dressed up if you want, but it's at five o'clock on October twenty-eighth out at Rock Park. So that'll be fun for all the kids to get out there and do a little mile, parents can come too, so. Um, and then actually on Halloween, the fire department again is heading out into the neighborhoods. At six o'clock, they'll be in Caravel Village. I don't have my glasses. It's on our Facebook page, so I apologize. They're in my office, so I can't read that. But anyway, if you go to the Facebook page or, you know, go ahead.
Six o'clock, Caravel Village, six thirty, St. Anthony Church, on Cora Cora Hills and Bar Apple and Piddylows.
So be a good time on Halloween night around here again as well. And with that, that's all I have.
Great, board comments, trustee Shipley?
All are standing up and thank you for coming, Nick, I see you back there. Um, Rosers, it's nice to see you, old firefighter, volunteer. Andy Albright, back there, that's taking a big role in the, uh, fire department full-time. We talk about full-timers all the time. Thanks for coming, I know that we have a lot of work to do. We want to listen to you, whether you believe it or not. Yes, we want to hear more from residents. And with no undue respect to contractors or developers, we need to listen about what brings businesses in, so we thank you for voicing your opinions as well. That's all I have.
Trustee Nordeig?
Thank you, I'd like to thank everybody who attended. I want to recognize our fire chief and the entire department. Every time I talk with them or see their work, I'm reminded how well organized they are and far ahead of the curve they operate. They're not just reacting to things, they're planning, training and preparing for what's next. It gives me a lot of confidence knowing that our community is protected by such a capable and forward-looking team. I really, really appreciate the chief's leadership and the direction of everyone in that department. Thank you.
See Rizzi?
I just wanted to thank everybody for being here, I appreciate the comments in both meetings. Um, it's been a long evening, so that's good. And then I'd also like to put a shout out to, uh, Dan and his department. I've had a lot of residents tell me that they're happy with the direction the Parks Department has been moving in and the changes from everything from the traffic islands to the giant pumpkin, as we just heard. And the events, you know, that, starting all the way back to Easter, it's, uh, it's a, a big change and everybody's happy with it. So thank you for coordinating all of that.
Trustee Nordeig?
Just thanks for coming, we're, we're working through it.
Clerk Slater?
No comments.
Treasurer Korstang?
No comments.
Is there a motion or discussion?
Make motion for adjourn.
Support. It's a motion by clerk Slater, supported by treasurer Korstang to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.